Can we adjust the temperature?
All right, I'll convene the, bring the order of the meeting of the Westboro Select Board. For all those that are, would like to join us, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to say thank you to Westboro TV for live streaming and recording it for further use, and I will now open it up for open forum if anyone is here for open forum. Can you give us a quick message on behalf of the election?
Yeah, so I just wanted to come before you tonight to let you know that I've added a day to early voting. It will be this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Town Hall in Memorial Hall. That is in addition to this Sunday also from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Voting will continue for the rest of this week during normal business hours and also all next week up until Friday at noon. And if there's any questions, they can call our office.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two on the agenda, the Housing Production Plan, the Planning Department. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Kristin Belanger. I'm the new Assistant Town Planner, and I am here today to discuss the next steps for getting acceptance of our Housing Production Plan with the state and to ask for the Select Board to adopt the plan. So I just have a few slides going through that process.
Perfect, thank you.
The first step, we need to obtain approval to adopt the Housing Production Plan from the Planning Board and the Select Board, so that's why I'm here tonight. Planning Board is going to be doing that at their next meeting on November 12th. Once we have those approvals, we'll prepare a submission package that includes a draft of the housing production plan document. We'll include a cover letter that's signed by both Select Board and Planning Board Chairs. We'll send the completed package to EO HLC, which is the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, upon which we'll wait. There's a 30-day completeness review that they do for that. At that point, we'll have the opportunity to address any deficiencies and respond to feedback if needed. We can make the necessary revisions or additions and then resubmit again. And then, once the package is determined complete, then they'll have 90 days to do a final review. Upon the completion of their review, they'll make a decision to either approve or disapprove for acceptance. And I just wanted to point out some benefits. If approved, the Housing Production Plan is effective for five years. If disapproved, we do have the option to revise and resubmit. Other benefits of an approved HPP with the state, if a community is SHI-certified compliant, decisions made by the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny a comprehensive permit application will be deemed consistent with local needs, and the board's denial will be upheld by the Housing Appeal, Appeals Committee. Another reason, communities that have HPP receive additional points on grant applications and are eligible for additional funding opportunities. And then, most importantly, once we have this blueprint, you know, guidance document, developers, staff, boards have a better understanding of what our current housing needs are so that we can plan accordingly.
Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate all the work on this. It's a very comprehensive report. I'm actually still going through it, so it's interesting to read all the details. I'll just open it up to the board, see if there's any questions or comments.
I'll just say that the work that went into the plan was significant and was a great effort, cooperation with multiple town departments, information sources. It helped that we have a good, you know, we have a master plan in place, that we had other research and other, you know, the senior needs assessment was beneficial in feeding into as well as other studies and plans we've done, and it's already guiding the work of the Affordable Housing Trust. And so it's definitely worthwhile to have this in place. And so I'll move to adopt the Housing Production Plan.
Yeah, do, so I also want to acknowledge the work done to develop this. I, I think as board members, we have the opportunity to review the actual production plan. It's in our packet, and I know we only have about 10 minutes on this agenda item, but I do think it would be beneficial for the public to understand kind of what's in the plan, where they can find it. I know the intention was not to provide a full presentation of the plan tonight, but I would, I'm not really comfortable with moving forward with the vote until kind of we have a little bit more of an explanation of what it is.
Okay. Jenny or Kristin feel like?
I'm just, you know, I love Jenny. I know you know this well, but I think it's important that the public understand what it is. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. And if the board recalls, we had a joint Planning Board/Select Board meeting where there was an overview given, so the public is definitely welcome to watch that as well. We have a copy of the Housing Production Plan on our website that the, that anybody can view, of course. The Housing Production Plan essentially goes over the demographics of the community and gives projections on the population trends, housing trends, things like that. So it helps us to understand what types of housing we will need based on the demographics. You know, do we have an aging population? Are we seeing families where we're going to need larger homes? Are we seeing smaller families come in where we need the smaller homes, things like that?
Yeah, I would just add that it's a very rich document. It's, I don't even know how many pages, about 40 pages or so. Well worth the read. It's readable. It's digestible. It's not too technical. Lots of trends in there, actually facts and figures particularly about the demographic of our community that I found interesting, and had I taken a quiz, I would have been wrong. So I do hope that this serves, and I was happy to hear Alan say, and I knew that the Affordable Housing Trust is using this already for guidance. So I do hope it not only serves the town well, but also the aspect of developers coming in to understand kind of what the needs are, because it's always better when there's alignment as part of the Planning Board and permitting process.
Absolutely. And I'll just add one thing, that the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw that we passed at town meeting last night, part of that came, was an outcome of the Housing Production Plan. So one of the things we looked at was the affordability in town, the rental rates and the, the mortgage rates, things like that. And then we compared it to what people are having for their income. And so we found that we are missing out on that lower income threshold and the higher income threshold, so the working, the working class area. So I think that was really important. And so we've already checked off one item in the action items for the Housing Production Plan.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I move to adopt the Housing Production Plan as presented and to further authorize the chair to execute and submit any additional documentation to achieve state approval of the plan.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you again, Jenny, and your, the team. Appreciate all the work on this. Thank you both.
I know.
Moving on to item three, the Request to Execute Contract for Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program for Acquisition of Zero Bowman Street, also known as the Ellis Walker's property. Look for, one of our other gents. Welcome.
Thank you. So if you all recall, last year, probably around this time, we did a presentation on wanting to move forward with the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application as part of the acquisition for the Ellis Walker property, which is located on Bowman Street, not too far from the Bowman Conservation Area, the main staging or parking area. It's about 35 acres of land. It went before town meeting this past spring for acquisition approval, and part of that approval was receiving the funding through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. We just found out a few weeks ago that we not only were selected through the state process, but through, got through the federal process as well, and we're one of eight communities in Massachusetts selected for funding through that program. So very exciting. And basically, tonight, we're looking for approval to execute the grant contract documents, which will cover 50% of the cost. And just as a reminder for anybody viewing from home, the other 50% is funded through both Sudbury Valley Trustees, our partner in acquiring this property. They'll be contributing $200,000 towards the cost, and then also Walkup Robinson Trust will be contributing as well.
Fantastic.
So what is the net cost from the town, not from those other funds, please?
The net cost to the town is $0 for the acquisition, and we also, Walkup Robinson has committed to $25,000 for initial stewardship as well, which is great.
That is a win-win-win.
Let me ask you just another question. I actually drove by there the other day, and knowing this was coming up on our agenda, I was like, oh, where are the signs, right? So is there a, I know we did a ribbon cutting for, I'm forgetting the other one.
Day Pray, maybe? That was before me.
The other one.
Zwicker.
Thank you, Zwicker.
Okay. Also before me, but.
Will there be some sort of signage? Can you just tell, just for the public's benefit?
Sure. So once we execute the grant contract documents, we'll get a notice to proceed from the grant program. And at that point, we can start working on the legal documents that are associated with that, so executing the deed and the conservation restriction with Sudbury Valley Trustees, who will be our CR holder. Once we have all those documents in place, then we can start our site work, but we can't really do any initial stewardship on the property until we officially own it. So that initial stewardship will include things like establishing a small parking area, installing a kiosk, working with WCLT and Sudbury Valley Trustees to blaze the trails and determine which trails will be kept, if any will be. There are some cart paths there now, so kind of determining whether we want to keep all those cart paths or eliminate some, if we need any small, like bog bridging to get across some of the stream areas. So taking a look at kind of all those aspects. And then the hope would be to open it to the public for the, I would say, mid to late spring, because it's going to take a little bit of time to get all those documents in place and then do the site work.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
So pursuant to Article 20 of the March 23, 2024 Annual Town Meeting, I would move to authorize the chair to execute all documents as presented to effectuate receipt of the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for the purpose of acquiring land at Zero Bowman Street, known as the Ellis Walker property.
Second, any further discussion?
I just want, I just, for disclosure, I think, because this is based on town meeting, that I can vote for it, but this is my aunt's property. So it is relative, but I'm looking, I guess, I think because it's accepting some of the town meeting, except that I can vote for it, but I just want to disclose it.
Perfect. All right, well, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, appreciate that.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Moving on to item four, Lead Service Line Update. DPW Director, welcome, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Pan, Director of Public Works. So you may recall that we've talked before about the requirement, what?
Thank you.
I could hear myself, so I thought.
I know, I know.
So we, there was a nationwide requirement through the EPA to inventory all service lines in every public water system. The service line is the pipe that takes water from in the street through the main water pipe to, to your house or to your business. And the intent was to identify the type of material that's, that's, that that pipe is. And if it's lead or a galvanized pipe, it needs to be identified and eventually removed. So October 16th was the deadline for that inventory to be complete and submitted, which we did. So we submitted our inventory on the 16th. The results are available. I guess you're not seeing them there, so I'm meeting them up there. So this is the Public Works website. You can see the lead line inventory link here. If you click on that, it takes you to this page, which offers two options. One is the survey, which I'll talk about in a second, and then the Lead Service Line Dashboard, which is this, which we've seen before. So this is the, these are the numbers we submitted. So zero lead have been identified so far, 66 galvanized pipe, 52 16 non-led, meaning there were other things besides lead or galvanized, and then 243 unknown. And so the 243 and the 66 are the pipes that we're concerned about right now. The next steps are to, by November 15th, the 66 and the 243 need to be notified by letter that, of the type of pipe they have, or the fact that their pipe isn't identified yet. There's a whole bunch of instructions and explanations about lead and all the things that make it important to figure this out. So we tell them that. Then our next step is to further investigate the unknowns and see if we can determine what type of pipe that is, and then ultimately replace the, the lines that are either lead or galvanized. Our timeline, so the EPA has a requirement for, again, this is including, you know, cities like Chicago and places that are much bigger than us, 10 years to complete the entire replacement of all service lines in your community. We've established a five-year timeline. So in 2025, we would secure funding ideally through town meeting to allow us to move forward with the investigations and the replacements. And then from 2026 to 2030, the replacements would occur. Of course, if we do it faster, that's better, but that's the timeline we've mapped out for now. And then costs, we're looking at 900 to a million, $900,000 to $1 million to complete what we, we've identified. The investigation is about $300,000, and then the remaining balance 600 plus would be to replace, replace pipes. Important in that number is that that's not all necessarily borne by the town, so there, there's probably more discussion to be had about whether the town is willing to or interested or paying for the replacement of private lines. So you have your pipe, you have your house. In between, there's a valve, and the town owns from the pipe to the valve, and then the property owner owns from the valve to the house. And so from the valve to the house is private, and so there's a few legal questions about whether we can do that. And then there's also just whether we should. And so that's, that's part of the process that needs to be figured out in the coming months. But, you know, some significant money that has to be spent to, to address this, and it's an important issue to be addressed. And that's, that's the update.
Thank you, Chris. Questions, comments?
A question. A question. Just the, the number you quoted there, the 900 to a million, is that assuming just the replacement of pipes to the base of the town, what we know is town-owned right now, or is that?
It includes everything. It's an estimate for everything, but it's based on the numbers that are on this dashboard, so 66 galvanized, and then the investigations for 243. So if we investigate those 243 and we find more galvanized, then that increases the cost, which is why I said 900 to a million, because it's variable based on what we determine in the investigations.
Okay. But is it, to that question that we have of whether the private pipe would be replaced by the town, does that number not include that?
It does include.
It does include. Okay. Thank you.
And of course, these are, this is an estimate, it's, and in terms of work, it's, this is all contracted work. It's, you know, we said it's about this much money to replace a line. There's obviously variability there, because you could have a short line, or you could have a line that's, you know, several hundred feet long, because your house is far back, or the business is far back from, from the, the street, so an estimate.
Chris, can you explain the numbers on the, in the verified, just the numbers in general, but the verified service lines on the left-hand side, or my left, where it says 5525? So those are the total number of lines in the town or properties?
Yep.
Okay. And then, so on the customer side, we have a number of 4586 and utility 4554. What am I missing on those numbers not adding up to 5525?
You're not missing anything. It's, it's a couple of things. One is there's, the, the formula for figuring this out was a DEP, or sorry, EPA-delivered format, and there's a corresponding, so that there's a, I'm showing the map now, but you can also change it to a table. And, and so the, the formula that they provided does not precisely, there, there seems to be some math error in there somewhere, and it's, and we, we don't know, like, we wanted to use their format, they were, it was dictated. I, I get it, we want to have everything 100% correct, but there's a little bit of a discrepancy in terms of the, the technique for tracking the data.
Okay.
And I guess one other point, and is that, so if you see those dots, and you probably know, because we talked about it before, but for anybody listening, it's, it's kind of sliced in half, because there's two sides to the, as I described earlier, there's two sides to the, the service line. So it's one service line, but it's, it's basic, but we're counting two for one, because we're distinguishing between private and public.
Okay. Okay. And so in the number, just using the consumer side, on the 4586, is that number really in half? Like, or that number represents the two?
That number represents the customer side, the number of customer verified lines.
Verified, okay. And then, so the, the 243, is that unknown because, based on the pictures and the process you asked for, it's unknown from that, or unknown because people haven't responded?
It's a variety of things, and there were a variety of ways to document this, including paperwork, you know, old permits, tie cards, all kinds of documents that we have. You're familiar with the survey, some were site visits by staffed out to houses to look at things. So either we didn't get a response, or the response we got was unclear, or we weren't able to get into that property, or some other reason.
Okay.
And the private, the, the public side of that is more difficult, because the private side, you can go in a basement or wherever the meter is and potentially see the line coming into the house, but the public side is buried, and so unless we have a record of that, the only way we're going to figure it out is the, is by digging up at the valve and looking at the pipe, which is why we have the $300,000 to investigate, because if we have to go, if we have to go excavate every single one of those in everybody's yards, then that's going to cost some money to, to do it, then to, then to restore it and all that sort of thing, so.
Thank you for that refresher. Thanks.
Other questions?
I have a few myself. I guess, one quick one, and we're also making assumption based on the year the house was built, like whether or not it's lead, so we've already sort of eliminated a lot of houses due to years. And what's the cutoff?
1986.
1986, okay. Thank you.
So lead was banned for use in plumbing, water services, 1986, so everything past that date, that's another way we ruled out a number of properties, just by date of construction.
So Chris, I have two questions for you. One is actually just quickly an observation. Inside the letter itself, my understanding is the letter that's going to be sent out as a form letter from state, local. One of the links I just clicked on, I know it's a sad day, under the opportunities to replace galvanized requiring replacement lead services, it has the right name on the link, but when you click on it, it actually takes you to Franklin's Town website, not Westboro's Town website. So I would just ask you to make sure that all the links are working properly. My question is around the note below that section, where it says, "The town of Westboro intends to replace the portion of the service line under town ownership. While replacing this line, we offer to replace the homeowner's portion of the service line at the homeowner's expense or without cost." This letter's going out in the next 30 days. It sounds like it's going to be a little bit of time before we figure out, you know, how the town wants to, as you said, decide can we and should we? So what's the message going to be to residents who might call and ask about that?
I don't know where you're actually reading that, because we haven't posted it, as far as I know, but the, the letter, as you said, was a template, which will be edited prior to us sending it out, and those questions, like, that sort of nebulous, not clear language will be edited to be something more direct, which I think upfront, our approach, I mean, and anybody has any guidance, you can tell me, but otherwise, it's going to be the more conservative approach, which is that you're replacing yourself, and then if opportunity is there for the town to do it, then, then potentially the town can do that. And, and it's not, just to be clear, it's not just the towns being stingy, there's legal things associated with ratepayers who are getting their lines replaced when somebody's line leaks yesterday and they paid for it to be replaced regardless. So that kind of, that's the question that I think just needs to be addressed.
No, I appreciate that. I guess, you know, just a thought and around whether or not this, I can imagine a lot of questions, so I'm just not sure if maybe there's an opportunity to make an FAQ or something like that on the website for people to, simple questions that they may be asking to kind of address those types of concerns. So thank you for the presentation. Any other questions or comments?
Can I ask a follow-up question to that in the determination? So what, I'm not clear on what the process will be and the timing of such for determining that private sector component, and that, obviously, my next question is the criteria around that. So what is the timing, is the first part of the question, of kind of when we determine that? Who determines it and who sets the criteria?
Based on our current plan, we won't start replacing until 2026, so, so I, I think it would be nice to have an answer soon, but I don't, it's not something we will have necessarily immediately, probably prior to town meeting when we ask for money, is my kind of off, like, we haven't refined a timeline, but I, I expect that we'd want to have an answer before town meeting.
And I guess I'm just not clear, is that under the jurisdiction of this board, or who determines that? I mean, it becomes, if, if there's money, obviously it goes to town meeting, and it becomes an article right in terms of a cost, but the recommendation would come from this board in term?
Well, I mean, typically, because it's, it has to do with Public Works operations, it would come from the director.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't, I just wasn't clear. Thanks.
Okay. Any other?
Oh, I guess one other quick note, and I don't know if we touched upon this, so, so we've got the, the town payer side and then the side the utility owns. If somebody has both sides that need to be replaced, then I guess the question is, how do we work with them in order to get that done, right? If we're saying they're paying for their half, and this is probably to be determined, but essentially, if both halves to be replaced, you know, how do we go? Is it too separate?
Right. All, all great questions.
Yeah, to be determined.
Lots of logistics associated with it, and, you know, it's an unfunded mandate, because there is no money that I'm aware of yet that's going to help us. This, this part of the process was paid for through a grant, so the town spent no money doing this inventory, but the expensive part of the project is not that way, as far as we, as, as far as it is right now. You can, you could potentially get some loans that maybe have low interest, but there's no money that we're aware of yet that's free.
Thank you for following up on this, and also nice job last night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate the time and the information. All right, moving on to item six on our agenda, request to appoint Leigh Anne Norman to the Conservation Commission. So I'd like to thank Ms. Norman for being willing to step up. My understanding is that she was a participant in our Civic Leadership Academy, so it's fantastic to see that as a developing, you know, interest in being members in different community committees within the community. So thank you very much for your interest, and I'll look for other comments from the board at this time.
Thank you for her interest.
Yes.
I just appreciate her interest and her willing to step forward. It's also good to see the, you know, folks involved at the Citizen Leadership Academy getting inspired to step forward and get involved, as opposed to learning everything about town government and running away, or running the other way, away from public service, so it's very much appreciated.
You have alumni right on your board.
Oh, yeah, there you go. I would move to appoint Leigh Anne Norman to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you again, Ms. Norman. Looking forward to seeing you at the Conservation Commission. Moving on to item six, amend the personnel policy clothing allowance for non-union employees.
Yep, so at the June 27, 2023 Select Board Meeting, we discussed that the personnel policies didn't clearly articulate or define who receives stipends or clothing allowances that are not in a union. And so we had updated the personnel policies at that time to add a section that did clearly define who gets, who gets those benefits and exactly how much they receive. As we were developing the fiscal '25 budget, the Community Development Director had requested that the clothing allowance for that position increase by $100, so from $100 to $200, and then also requested that the Conservation Director, due to the nature of her position, be included to receive a clothing allowance of $425, which is consistent with the clerical union clothing allowances. So these amounts were added to the FY '25 budget, but cannot be expended unless we update this section of the personnel policies. Also, since the original request was made, the board has authorized that the community development, sorry, that the responsibilities of the building commissioner be removed from the Community Development Director and put into a separate, non-union building commissioner position. So at this time, the request is for $100 for the building commissioner position and the $425 for the Conservation Director position. We've also added an amendment that just clearly identifies how the, the clothing allowance is paid out, and that is through reimbursements.
Thank you, Kristi. Any comments?
Do we have to, sorry, just a question, so do we have to also authorize the increase from 100 to 200, or is that done?
The, the budget was only increased by the $525, so, so that, right now, the way that it stands is that the $100 would be with the Community Development Director, an additional 100 with the building commissioner, and then the Conservation Director would get 425. So if you look at the second page in your packet, it's redlined to show what the changes are.
But so far, motion, I was just looking at a motion, all we're, has to approve is 10425, so not the additional 104?
Correct, because we only budgeted the 525, so the 100 is going, rather than going to Community Development Director, it's going to Building Commissioner.
Getting split.
Perfect.
Right, because the Building Commissioner didn't previously
That makes sense now.
...receive any stipend
Perfect.
in this policy.
Can I ask for clarification on that? So I thought that the Community Development Director position did receive 100 before. What, I'm sorry.
No, it, it did, so, because we didn't have a, so we, Community Development Director used to also be the building commissioner. They received the $100. When we split it, now we're asking that the Community Development Director retain the 100, but now the additional 100 be budgeted for the building commissioner.
Got it. Sorry, and that is in the red line, sorry.
That was my confusion too, so.
Sorry.
I had the same confusion.
Sorry.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Okay, got it.
It was a long night last night.
Sorry.
Any further questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve an amendment to Section 5.17 of the personnel policies to include clothing allowances for the building commissioner in the amount of $100, and the Conservation Director in the amount of $425, and to further clarify that the allowances will be paid on a reimbursement basis.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Kristi. Moving on to item seven, Community Center Next Steps.
Yep, so I had put this on the agenda, we had the, the town meeting last night, and the article did pass to transfer money from the stabilization account to, to be used for the further design through bid documents of the Phase One, proposed Phase One, and then further design development of the Phase Two. So the discussion that I just wanted to start tonight was what the next steps are, given that funding. So related to the Phase One design, we actually met with the design team this morning and have identified a couple of dates that we still need to confirm, but in the first, we're looking at sort of the first week of November, where we would hold two public engagement sessions, one at the senior center during the day and one in the evening for the general public to confirm that design. So there was a question asked last night about input, if there was still time to sort of provide input on size of rooms, I think was the example that was given, and really that's the opportunity for the public to give that feedback. And so after we have those meetings and, and taken that feedback, we would confirm that design at the Select Board Meeting in November, November 12. And then we would, I would be recommending that the board turn Phase One over to the Municipal Building Committee to continue to make decisions about how that would move forward into bid documents. That being said, I do think that we want to, we, I think this board has committed pretty strongly to keeping the community engaged, and our design team offered this morning a suggestion that they've used in other communities, which is to have a task force, sort of, so folks pulled together by myself to sort of help lead the design team in a weekly call. So, so folks that would be on the task force that we would pull together would be people that, you know, that have, have expressed a high interest or passion for the project, sort of on both sides, you know, people who have some concerns at this point about maybe the, the Phase One, and then others who might champion that project, but really to pull everyone together to offer input to the design team. Some of the tasks that they might complete would be to go to different senior centers with the design team, identify furniture for, as an example, so kind of moving through that process, and then making recommendations to the municipal building committee based on those conversations. And so I think we, there's a few folks that we want to reach out to that have been pretty involved in the community engagement, and if other folks are interested, I would welcome them to reach out. But that would really just be a task force that would really get to inform the design team. It would be, it would be a commitment of a weekly basis until the March town. It would be, it would be a commitment of a weekly basis until the March Town Meeting. So that is, I think, so we can discuss that further at the November 12 Select Board meeting, but again, that would be the time where we would confirm the design, it would be transitioned to the Municipal Building Committee with this task force set up to provide recommendation to the Municipal Building Committee. And then the second part of the funding would cover just further design development for the future phases, and so, that would really take on a very similar approach at this point as we have done previously, where we further, where we hold additional community engagement to further develop those designs. And so that, I think, could remain under this board's authority, and then, and we would move forward again as we, as we have previously, as we looked at Phase One. And then, I guess the last thing I did mention in here is the discussion with the library about using either the first or second floor for temporary space. The library has extended the deadline to receive bids for temporary space. It was originally was yesterday, but it's been extended, I think, till the 4th or 5th of November. I think that's good data to compare in terms of what might be available to them, but, you know, I certainly would like to have those conversations, and I would work with Sean as your representative to that committee to have those conversations.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions?
Go ahead.
One question, how large do you imagine the task force being? Is it, are you, are you looking for five, or seven, or 23?
Not 23. I think that we would anticipate, I mean, I don't want necessarily put in, I guess a range probably would be, I would expect, you know, seven to 10 people, maybe. You know, certainly, you know, it would just be dependent on folks' availability and who we've identified. So there's a few people that, just in public engagement that we've thought of, and then we just want to make sure that we're, you know, thinking even beyond that, so.
So, appreciate the idea of the task force being brought forward, I think that that's important. I think it keeps a true community engagement level in the process. I think we've, for anyone who has served on a municipal building project, we know how the, at least three of us have been in that, I think, how deep in the weeds you get there, and it quickly can become unrelatable from a resident perspective, taxpayer perspective. So, I think it's a great idea, and I like the idea that the task force, what you're proposing is that the task force would, you know, inform or be additive to the physical design space as well as the aesthetic design space, and work with the Municipal Building Committee. So, it won't surprise you, Kristi, that I think 11 is a great number. It's odd, and it's, although nine is also great, so I feel like that would give us a good, good bandwidth. My question is, is really more around the timeline and understanding, you know, there's a lot of work to be done between now and annual town meeting, so I don't want to lose sight of that. We all saw the vote, experienced it last night, it was close, and it's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to have a, well, we need two-thirds, right, to be successful at town meeting, and so while it passed last night, I personally didn't walk away with a good feeling about, you know, the vote, and appreciate the work that we need to do to see this move forward successfully. So that said, you know, I'm looking at these dates of November 1, which is about a week from, well, it's not quite two weeks, right? So, next, it's about two weeks to pull together Phase One sessions. And then we've got November 12, which is our meeting in the library, you know, they're getting their extension to 11:40, I would imagine they're meeting right around there. I'm not sure, does that give all the parties the necessary time to come to the November 12 meeting with kind of an understanding of, will the library space be in there, how do we make that decision, et cetera? So.
Well, I didn't, I didn't intend for that conversation to happen in time for the November 12 meeting. I think that that's probably a lengthy discussion, because I think there's a lot of consideration that needs to happen, you know, related to the needs of the library and how that would work in the community center. I think that that's a longer discussion. The only thing that I was saying for November 12 was that we would have that final community engagement session, or two sessions, and then bring the design for confirmation to the board on the 12th. If we go longer than that, it's unlikely that we would meet the March Town Meeting timeline, because in talking to the, the design team today, I mean, we, it's a tight, it's a tight timeline, and, you know, they've committed to making it, and I think we're, I think we're in a really good place of anyone who's been sort of following along in this process, this iterative process. We, I, I feel very strongly that the Phase One is very responsive to what, what the feedback that we've received related to what the programming should be, so.
So I couldn't agree with you more. I think we've been transparent, I think it's been clear, there have been multiple ways in which to engage, surveys, engagement, online, email, Kristi, contact a select board member, attend the council on aging, on and recreation, whoops, on and on and on. I just, I can't, I guess I'm saying this to myself out loud, but also to fellow board members, that we need to be super confident that November 12, you know, when we kind of say yes to that design, that we really feel like it's something we can reasonably move, not reasonably, that we feel strongly about moving forward with, because that's kind of the anchor for where we go, like we're setting sail, and that's what Town Meeting is going to ultimately make their determination on. So I just, I understand it's tight, I don't want that building to sit fallow, I think we need to move forward, I'm fully supportive of it. Unfortunately, I don't think we have the community support right now, and we have to be wide, eyes wide open to that, at least the people that showed up last night, and, you know.
Yeah. I do think that, that transferring the project to the Municipal Building Committee creates that opportunity, I mean, they've been meeting every other week, and, you know, I know there was concern about their ability to manage the two projects, but I think what we understand is that that golf club project is probably headed back to the Select Board for future discussion. But I think the Municipal Building Committee can, in an, in an open meeting, you know, do some work to refine that design, and so, you know, I think just because the board confirms it, they confirm it to the point at which it's at, and then it has to go from schematic design to full design, which is, follows the same trajectory as the library project.
Wait, I'm sorry, when you say the same trajectory, just so everyone's clear, the same timeline, so they would both?
Well, it does, but also that the library had a number at schematic, and has further refined that through the work of the Building Committee, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kristi, in regards to the library piece of it, I'm just curious, they've gone out through their process, and in their process, I'm sure that they've probably identified the size of space that they, that they need, right? Do we have a feel for how much space is available? What I'm visualizing is, you know, we got Phase One we're talking about now, we're talking about probably that Phase One, that empty area in the middle, I'm assuming is what people are targeting as a potential area for a library. Do we have an idea of what the need is, and will that meet that need even? I'm just curious if there's?
The RFP identifies a minimum of 10,000 square feet, up to 20,000 square feet, which I believe is, 20,000 square feet is the size of the current library.
Um.
I believe.
Right.
Maybe. So, so, that being said, I think, I was not at the meeting, but at a recent Library Building Committee meeting, it was suggested that there might be opportunity in that lower level in the back part, especially now that we're not talking about building out that sort of, like, building out the whole outer
Right.
piece, but just having that entire back portion available. That space is about 10,000 square feet, and so there's more work to be done in partnership with the library to understand how that would work, but it sounds like that discussion happened. I'll let you speak to it, Sean, as to whether or not folks were open to that.
Yeah, so it was brought up, and I, I think, I think generally folks were comfortable, I think they wanted to see what came back with the bids. There's, there's multiple cost components to the temporary library, right? One is moving all the books, which is going to happen regardless, and then two is the cost of the space, which is really where we're trying to see if we can save money potentially using other town-owned space. So, I think we look at what we get the bids back at, I think also that putting out there that there is potentially a town option to do, a town-owned option to do this, does that then maybe bring potential bidders down, you know? So we'll see what we get when they open on, in two weeks. But, you know, I think generally, we're gonna try and do what we think is best for the town.
Am I correct in thinking that, kind of, we're gonna wait for the Library Committee to let us know what they, you know, they want to engage on this or not? They're gonna go through the process and let us know?
Right. Open the bids, we consider also the, the town offering, I guess, a zero bid, you know, versus what the other bids are, and figure everything out. And, I mean, I have not done this before, I don't know if there are other components that may make sense, so we try and figure all that out. I mean, the one thing to consider is, is we're hearing that potentially that first-floor space would be available during, even during construction, getting an idea of exactly what that means, like, is there just like a temporary wall-up, and, you know, everybody's listening to hammers and stuff all day long, and it's, well, but if there's, we're not getting dust in here, I, you know, I guess, trying to make sure we understand exactly what that experience will be, and if maybe there's a small additional cost somewhere else, it still makes sense.
Right. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Kristi. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, so I know we'll have a chance to comment, or we'll learn more, excuse me, about the, the library re-low potential in the first-floor space. I do think, again, it's gonna be important, kind of, collaboration, because I can already envision the benefits of that, right, from the town perspective, and the, reducing the cost burden on the library, and yet, concerns vocalized by, well, I guess, let me, so we wouldn't have seniors in that space now, we, it would be really an open space in a construction space, right? Okay.
But does one impact the other?
But one, yep, yep. Okay. And it wouldn't be, excuse me, Sean, just on the, you mentioned zero, kind of zero bid cost from the town's perspective, there, it wouldn't be zero to the project, because there's still fit up of that empty space, right?
Correct.
But no lease payments to?
But no lease payments, right, okay. Just a clarification.
No, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I would imagine that the, we would need a CO for the, for the library to go in while, you know, on the other side, construction's going on, there's no occupancy at that point, so, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of juggling if that happens, so.
Yeah, I mean, you hit one of the things, I think, to move it in, we'd have to make sure that we have, can occupy the building, and I know we've talked about some of the life-saving, lighting, whatever, we'd have to, there's gonna be some fit up, I'm sure, that has to go in to do that. The other piece is just a question, knowing that we also have, at least for now and later phases, some areas upstairs, could it be even a combination of the two, meeting space or?
Yeah, I think we're open.
Program space upstairs, or something like that?
We're open, I mean, I think we're open to the whole discussion, and I think that's, that's why we're raising it, and I think the reason that it hasn't happened yet, the discussion hasn't happened yet, is, is because the, the RFP will, will yield more information about sort of what's available out there. I mean, I, you know, looking back at when we did this building, and putting our police department and our school department on the other side of town was not ideal, but that was the only bid that I believe that we received, and I know that that creates challenges when you're, you know, when you're at the end of the project, having to determine when you're gonna give notice to leave. So there's, there's a lot of different variations at play, but if it's a really low lease payment, that, and it's a better-prepared space, maybe it's worth it. So I think there's a lot to be discussed. My initial conversation was with our OPM for the Community Center, just to talk through kind of how that would work. Her advice was to talk with our Community Development Director, because our Building Commissioner was, was away, but, you know, his sort of general thought was, there's, there's a way to do it, we just have to figure it out. And so, that's, I think, that's where we need to have those conversations, not just on our side, but with the library when they're ready.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no other municipal spaces of 10,000 to 20,000 square feet that would be available without disruption of other programming, et cetera?
I'm not aware of any, no.
Okay.
I do think that, no, I'm not aware of any. I guess, what I was gonna say is, so I just looked it up, so it's about, just under 18,000 square feet, it looks like. You know, I think, it's, it's difficult, I mean, if you look at the town offices, when we relocated, we were, when we sort of jammed into tight spaces, that were certainly not ideal for the period of time for which we were out. That being said, it's, it's a, it's a different service, and so, kind of trying to weigh all of those, you know, variations, so.
Thank you, Kristi.
Couple of questions related to the, the task force. So is this a committee like other?
It's not a committee.
Committees?
No, it would just be a working group.
Got it. So no open meeting law, posted agendas, okay. But they would be reporting out regularly to the Municipal Building Committee, so that's really how folks would hear about it.
Essentially, it's to keep the project moving in between the municipal buildings. So right now, that group has been, I mean, essentially the same exact function, so, has been our Recreation Director, John Kirkland, our Senior Center Director, myself, and Kim have been meeting with the architects to sort of synthesize, help them synthesize what we've heard and what they've heard at the public engagement, and then we move on to the next presentation or the next report out. So this is just broadening that group to include, you know, more users of the building or future users of the building.
And increasing sort of the research component that, to augment.
Yeah.
So if people have questions about that task force, they should contact you directly.
Yes.
Great.
All right, thank you, Kristi. Moving on to item eight, request to approve meeting minutes of October 8, 2024.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Krista, I'll open it to you, Town Manager Report.
Yep, so, as, as our town clerk mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have early in-person voting being held at Town Hall until November 1st. One thing that I left off of this, but I wanted to, I had intended to include, is that, related to the B-Walt project, working with our, our Director of Planning, and then the chairs of both this board and the Planning Board, we're working to develop a joint meeting between this, this board and the Planning Board, to, to go over some of the concerns that we've been hearing about the B-Walt, as well as the history and the funding of that, of that project. So we don't have a date for that yet, but I would expect to have a date by the November 12 meeting. The Main Street Trick or Treat is going to be on Tuesday, October 29, from 4:00 to 6:30. Due to the early in-person voting at Town Hall, we will not have the trick-or-treating with inside Town Hall, rather, town departments will be set up in the alley between the coop and the Town Hall, but, but, you know, certainly that, that, that event is throughout town. The Veterans Day Ceremony will be held on Monday, November 11. Congratulations to Jim Tepper, who is the 2024 Veteran of the Year. The Select Board meetings, as you decided at your last meeting, are scheduled to be November 12, November 19, December 3, and December 17. That's through the end of the year, and then we would likely add in, as I mentioned, that, that joint meeting with the Planning Board as an additional meeting. License and permit renewal season starts November 1 and goes until the end of the calendar year. Our office processes 150-plus individual licenses, which include liquor license, convicts, hotel, motel, car dealer, and other miscellaneous permits. The winter parking ban starts on November 1, so there's no on-street parking for more than an hour from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM until April 1. Wanting to wish congratulations to Dan LaRoche of the Buildings and Grounds Department Wanting to wish congratulations to Dan LaRoche of the Buildings and Grounds Department and Alma Demont of Council on Aging on their upcoming retirements. Dan has been with the town for 38 years and Alma for 41 years, so thank them both for their decades of service. The Department of Public Works updates. The DPW has recently awarded $333,000 grant from the DAM and SEWALT program of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The grant funds a capital plan project to complete improvements to the lower spillway at the Sandro Pond reservoir. Work will occur in the fall of 2025. Progress continues on the sewer flow analysis and workshops have been completed. The DPW remains on track to provide the select board with an update in December. Three vehicles, three electric vehicles were recently purchased to support the DPW, Community Development Department, and Health Department. Funding for those vehicles was appropriated at the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. And then equipment inspections, training, and route rehearsals were completed in preparation for snow operations, which didn't feel like it was needed today when it was 80 degrees. In the police department, the Westboro Police Department is pleased to announce the conditional offer, job offer extended to Officer Matthew Feria. Officer Feria, who has served with the Townsend Police Department for the past two years, is undergoing a background check with the department. A native of the Hudson Mass, Officer Feria is well acquainted with Westboro Police Department's proud tradition of excellence and we are confident he will be an outstanding addition to our team. In addition, we're thrilled to have three new recruits, Officer Sweeney, Mercier, and Cleveland, currently progressing through the Lynnfield Police Academy. These recruits are approximately one-third of the way through their training and have responded with enthusiasm and dedication to their new roles. We look forward to having them join us in patrolling and protecting our community. The Westboro Police Foundation held its successful annual golf tournament on October 15, 2024. This year, the foundation has sponsored essential mental health training, launched the Westboro Police Foundation Officer of the Month award to recognize outstanding service, and is currently working to implement comprehensive health screenings for the officers. The tournament was another resounding success. We're excited about these developments and remain committed to serving the community. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristi.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should just add, I did put on your desk that the retirement party for our executive director at the Senior Center, Alma Demont, is Wednesday, November 6 from 1:00 to 3:00.
And that's open to anyone to attend?
Yep.
Yep.
Issues and correspondence, anyone? Sean, you want to start with that?
Oh, sure. I'll start. To be brief, thank you to everybody who attended last night's town meeting and participated and spoke. And another very successful town meeting where, you know, we got to hear from everybody and, you know, important decisions were made. We heard about the community center and the golf course and people made their feelings known and, and we heard them. So thank you all very much for attending.
Just real quick, I brought this up before, but the annual Westboro Good Scout Dinner is on Wednesday, November 6, the Doubletree Hotel. This year's honoree is Jim Ball, who spoke last night at town meeting, but well-deserving recipient. Anybody interested can register at www., well, they can look for the information at But we look forward to celebrating Jim at that event. And just a reminder as well that the annual Westboro Turkey Trot, westbroturkeytrot.org, I think is the website for that, is occurring on Saturday, November 23, so the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Sign up early so you make sure you ensure you get your T-shirt.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. Just one item, just want to let everyone know that Kindness Week starts on November 10, Sunday, November 10, and runs all week, so look at, look to westbrowknex.org as well as many other organizations and businesses around town who are participating in that week-long celebration.
So two quick things. The first, in a recent meeting, we were reviewing candidates for the Westboro Youth Commission. As part of my comments, I talked about some issues that the department has faced in the last couple of years. It's come to my attention that a few people felt that I was directing my comments at former staff in that department, and I want to apologize for that. That was not my intent. I was trying to specifically not direct and be pointing to individuals. It was structural issues that we, that I saw and some operational issues of how that department was operating within the town in general. And that I in no way meant to impugn or critique the excellent work that those individuals did for the department and their many years of service. That effort and that service is appreciated and I recognize that service as being good for the town. And so the fact that my comments could be misconstrued, I want to apologize and just make it clear that that wasn't my intent. And, and so I'm sorry that it was able to be taken that way. On a second note, just a reminder that on Veterans Day, there is a gathering. I don't actually have the time in front of me. It's the morning of the 11th. There's a schedule, it's been posted on Facebook, it's on the town website.
It's 10:30, was it, or 10?
10:30 at Forbes.
Yep. The main will start at 10:30 in front of the Forbes building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. I have no updates. Ian, you wanted to?
Yeah, just real quick, and I didn't, I apologize for being late. I would have done it in open forum, but, you know, folks saw, I just want to send our condolences to the family of Paul McNulty, who recently passed away. Paul was longtime Board of Health Director, retired, actually only a couple of years ago.
I can't remember when.
But did, I think, I don't know the number of years, but I think well over 30 years of service to the town and just wanted to recognize him, but also send our condolences to his family and to his friends.
Thank you, Ian. Seeing nothing else, I'll look for a motion to enter into executive session.
Yes, that's me again, right? I'll move, we enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, Department of Public Works, dispatchers, police patrol, and police supervisors, if the chair determines that an open meeting would have a detrimental impact on the board's position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Patrick Purcell and Christopher Paint. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285 CV01281, if the chair declares that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro, First Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court, Case Number 19TL000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro, ATL, US District Court, CA Number 4:23 CV12017-MRG, if the chair declares that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court, Case Number 23-40709, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE residents of Westboro Station, Northland TPLP LLC at 100 Charleston Meadows Drive, Worcester Land Court, Case Number 22MISC000445-DRR, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property at 231 Turnpike Road, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation arising from the Forest Municipal Building Project, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of October 8, 2024.
Thank you, Ian. And I do declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating and litigating position. May I get a second?
Edinburgh seconds?
Roll call vote.
Edinburgh, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kio, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you again to Westboro TV. Everyone have a great night.